And Mr. Bradshaw? First of all, thank you for having us. And we're excited to be here to showcase some of the things to you that Student Services does and then what the schools are doing, Sheriff's Department, and those things. So I'm just going to go over and give a brief overview of what we will be talking about today. And then everybody who has been instrumental in putting this together will also come forward to speak. So I just, I do want to introduce who has been instrumental in putting this whole thing together. Brett Holland, who is a school psychologist. Tomas Gonzalez, school social worker. John Yule, school social worker. Sergeant Frank with the Sheriff's Department. And Sergeant Farmer with the Sheriff's Department. And also, Shalae Jackson, who is also a school social worker. But she is at the County Commissioner meeting with the students who are reading their essays to the County Commissioners for Children's Week. Okay? So I will begin with, we came up with our title, which is Citrus County Schools Emotional and Behavioral Support Systems. And the things that we're going to be going over today are the services that Citrus County Schools have in place, services that we have to either address mental illness, identify different conditions that students may have with mental illness, and then the procedures that we follow as a school district along with the Sheriff's Department to address the students and staff. So the first thing is going to be the Annual Crisis Team Review. We're also going to be touching on the Threat Assessment. Safe Schools Interagency Team for Prevention, which is STP. Some of you have probably heard of that before. Our daily crisis intervention are things that are, every single day, things that we face. Baker Act follow-up, Skyward access, how we have put some information into Skyward that relates to students that we kind of keep an eye on. Staff referrals, relationships, and then what we have in place for professional development. Okay? So right now, I will turn it over to Mr. Yule.
I think I have, yeah, you can do that. Surely trust me with this. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to go over a couple of slides here, basically. And one of the things we look at is just the school intervention teams. And of course, the teams themselves, we don't necessarily have a children or a next-gen edisay. We have two teams, basically. We have four students. Oh, sorry. We have the Student Intervention Team. That's one of the teams we have. And of course, we have the County Assistance Team, which supplements the Student Intervention Team. And basically, they're made up of different people. Your school, obviously, the school intervention teams, you have your administration, your school counselors, school social workers, school psychologists, staff specialists, school resource officers, and school nurses as well. In terms of the CAT team, we still have other people because sometimes when we talk about a bigger issue than a individual crisis, such as a broad loss, then of course, you'd have your county assistance people, which would be more of the same, just from the different schools, such as counselors coming from other schools, psychologists coming from other schools, so on and so forth. And so that's what we call the County Assistance Team. And basically, some of the things we talk, that we work on, would be your potential suicide and self-injury procedures, school-wide crisis response plans, deal with death and loss, and also threat assessment. And basically, each one of those responded, is built on our general model, which is our flow chart I'm going to show you next. So this chart, no matter what you're talking about, whatever the situation is, it's always going to follow the skeleton to some degree. Some of the teams will change, team members, some of the situations will change, but this is actually the model that we use. And I want to make, just want to make mention the fact that this model's been in place since 1984. And the Florida Emotional Development Act and Suicide Intervention Act was in 1984. We've had something in place since then, okay? And we've been very proactive. Because in 1990, the Florida had kind of rescinded, the state of Florida had rescinded the curriculum, I say the curriculum, the certification requirements for educators to actually have training in this particular area. And so we've always been proactive since 1984. We've had some form of this policy and procedures up here, as you see today, we're talking about today. So it's been very good. The existing board and the previous boards and members have always been very, very helpful in keeping us in the forefront. So we've been proactive, we remain proactive. So let's go ahead and look at the chart itself. I think I'll turn this way if it's okay. When you look at the flow chart, basically, no matter what crisis you're talking about, individual or broad loss, you're always going to have someone making, you know, advising the school that this is happening. And whether the school principal's directly involved in, say, an individual crisis such as suicide, that administrator always is going to be made aware of what's going on in his or her campus. But the school administrator and the counselor are, in fact, the lead people in these sorts of crisis management scenarios. And if you look at the people that are members of it, whether they're, you know, on the Student Intervention Team, you may not have everybody involved in that. For instance, suicide, we certainly want to have at least two people involved, so we're not overlooking anything. But in a broad loss, you'd have more people. Now, when I say broad loss, I'm talking about maybe responding to a teacher's death, maybe responding unfortunately to some type of student shooting, or a bus accident. Those are what we call a broad loss. And so obviously, depending on the number of people involved in the situation, you're going to have different team members. Certain teams will be smaller than others. So basically, what happens in terms of this, we have a plan already for suicide ideation that we work together very closely with, and we work very closely with the Sheriff's Office. We implement some type of a plan to address that and make sure that we are taking charge of the situation and everyone's safe. We implement that and we monitor that. In terms of broad loss, which is a bigger issue, then we have, you know, bigger, or larger numbers of people involved, obviously. But in every case, whether it's a simple thing, and I say simple, I should say simple, but whether it's a specific individual crisis, or a broad loss, or a threat assessment, there's always going to be someone implementing a plan, monitoring what's going on, and having feedback. And so that we know what we've done, how we've done it, and whether or not we need to make changes. So if you notice the little box in the bottom, that's the crisis cat box. And of course, obviously, that's if we need a bigger team, if we need more resources involved in order to handle the situation. So having said all that, probably, I think I'm okay on this part, and I can probably slide it over. You could talk on this all day, and I promise I wouldn't do that. So, but just keep in mind that this is, this is it. When you talk about any other crisis, whether it's self-injury, whether someone's having a meltdown over grades, or whether we're talking about broad loss, a threat assessment, all these things follow this particular, this chart, this flow chart. And we have a lot of other sub-flow charts to deal with, for instance, medium to high-risk suicide, and also low-risk suicide. We have all those things that we take into place, but it always follows this basic outline.
I just want to say one thing. I have a friend of mine in the audience, Susan Reader, Dr. Susan Reader, and she's a psychologist in the area. And she's here listening to what we're presenting as far as the school system, and she's always been a very active person, a very helpful person to the school system, and has some suggestions that I'll share with the committee later on. And I really appreciate you coming and doing that. Terribly well-respected person in our community.
I hate to interrupt, but I do want to give you these folders. I did not give those when I should have. They have some of the handouts in them that are a little bit difficult to see from where you are, so I'll give these to you as well as a copy of the PowerPoint.
No, chair. Just, no, the one question I have on the SIT flow chart is, why is the SRO so low on it? And my reason why, I guess I'm saying that, is because I know that you guys are pretty involved. Sometimes, the reason we learn of a threat may be from the SROs, but it seems like when the administrator's aware that that's where the SROs would come in, and it just seems like it's lower than everyone else, or that a lot of the initial team members.
Let me see if I can address that for you. First of all, we had this flow chart, actually, a long time ago. This flow chart used to go down, and it was always a pecking order, it looked like. It would be like going from social worker, we'll say, or psychologist, so on and so forth. We took that out, and we put it here, as you see horizontally. And the reason we did that is we wanted to make sure people understood that when we say we need two people to respond to a crisis, we'll say in suicide, I'm thinking that's what you're referring to? Are you referring to suicide interventions, or just?
No, I'm thinking you mentioned two terms. You mentioned individual or, what was the other?
Broad loss.
Broad loss. And of course, when I think of broad loss, I'm thinking, I want my SRO at the front. Sorry, guys. You have the best, we don't. And so I'm thinking, if something's aware of, that's the first phone call I would be thinking as an administrator I'd be making in the flow chart.
I had just the opposite response that he had, because I, being in the system, seen the vertical chart before. And when I saw this, I thought, oh, it seems so very equal. You know, everyone's listed side by side. So I had the very opposite thought you had. And remember, we're talking about mental health and stuff, so you don't usually think of, the first person you think of is not the SRO when it comes to mental health. Part of the whole plan, certainly, but that's not the first thought that you have. I'm sorry, John.
Right. What, I understand your question, but I think we work very, very closely together. And there's going to be some times, let me give you an example, the reason I mentioned suicide. We have literally hundreds of suicidal ideations every year, okay? Not all of them require, say, a Baker Act, okay? So what, and it doesn't mean there's, because the SRO's not involved in those, that they're in a diminished role at all. As a matter of fact, if you were to look at our suicide report flow chart, okay, which is not here, but I have them, I can show you, that there's a very specific place for that particular, the SRO. In that particular instance, not broad loss, but the other instance, basically, what we're doing, what we're hoping to do, and just get every case, is we're identifying whether someone is suicidal, that we're making sure that his locus parentis, we're in contact with the parents, and ninety, probably ninety-nine percent of the cases, ninety-five, you know, that person's going to assume responsibility for that child, because it's their child. But being a locus parentis role that we are, we also have built into our form, for instance, the, what the parent response is. Now, there are times when the parent does not, does not exercise the right response, okay, which is, obviously, that's an SRO concern, because they can't take charge of the situation. Also, the other factor is that if they're going to initiate a Baker Act, they're going to do that, but not all of these are Baker Acts. As a matter of fact, the vast majority are not. But they're serious, but they require more of the counseling end of it, and the release to the parents, and so we, you know, the SRO is a very, very integral part of what we do, okay? But you're not seeing it, because it's not in that particular chart. So, but they are part of it, and they're supplemental, just like we are, and everyone else is. But the two people that put the nuts and bolts together, that is going to be your administrator and your counselor that should be in the case.
Mr. Yule, I've got a question. This, did it start out as the Suicide Intervention Team, when they talked about SIT, and, but now it's the School Intervention Team, but it's the same?
Well, what it was, was some confusion out of it. People, they've changed it. It is, it can be called Suicide Intervention Team, but basically, it is the School Intervention Team, because basically, it covers things like self-injury.
Right.
And all those other things that go along with it.
You're right, but it's been interchanged over the years, absolutely. So you had mentioned, I think you just said something, not literally a hundred, or you said hundreds of, or a hundred of threat assessments that the SIT makes. Is there, do we have hard facts on that? Is that?
I have hard data. I have it etched in my head here and tell you, just from about, no, no, the 2014. Okay, remember the last time we had an incident in the paper, I did inquire about certain things? I did, I actually went to Record Division of the Sheriff's Department, and I actually looked at our statistics, just to give you this information. Hard statistics, just from that little period. 2011, 12, and 13, there was 517 suicidal ideations to our department. There were zero completions. My only point in saying that is I want people to understand, and I don't want to get into this today, because no one asked me to do this, but when statistics are thrown around, they fail to mention, when they talk about maybe a county being leading in suicide, or something along those lines, they fail to look at the age groups, or to break it down. Age group of minor kids in our school, okay? If you look at our record for responding to those things, absolutely impeccable. And not just back to 2007, but we have a long history, as you know, because you've worked in there as well. And we've worked closely together over the years with this. We've had a good result, and it has to do with what we're talking about today, procedures and policy, also proactive, being proactive and having support at school boards and administrators. But in no way have we, we all look together as a team, and not everyone actually understands the entire team function, I know that, but I can guarantee you that the SROs are a full member in this particular process.
Well, and the reason I mention that is because it just shows you how valuable this team is, because of the numbers that, of children that are reaching out for help, and that this team takes those threats and those risks very seriously. And that's what we need to continue with. And I know that you all are working hard to do that, but that's, mental health issues, as I'm sure we're all aware of, is a big issue in today's society, and we need to stay on top of it. And so I just, I just, that's a topic you don't hear talked about, it's not published in the newspaper very often, you know, but those are real issues that we have to deal with.
I think you're right, and I'll just sum it up by saying, am I in here, that when you, when you see something quoted as a statistic, just, I would hope the public, we remember to look at the breakdown statistics. If you see something between 15 and 23, and someone citing a statistic, and being a leading county and the state for suicide, it's not necessarily accurate. They don't take into account things like elderly populations, or young adults, so on and so forth. But when you look at what the school's doing, the school board is doing, and has been doing, and will be doing, that's good, that's a good track record. Thank you.
That's a good track record.
And just add on real quick, in reference to that, what you've got to remember is also with our Safe School Action Plans, I think that might be something to consider, is the SROs aren't only at the top of that list in 911, it's a critical incident, where someone is suicidal and hurt themselves early, right at that point. Yeah, the SRO is much higher up on that scale, it's an immediate call, but with this, it's more of a team collaboration, it's all working together. I think that's the key, is quite a flower, so.
And my thinking on this is, and I don't want this to come across as not valuing the success of this, I'm thinking though, that in 1984, we didn't have the internet, and that a big part of the challenges the SROs face, and that we face, in learning about mental health, um, health, sorry, mental health, is often through social media and social interaction, or social media interaction. The school system is limited into how and what we are able to do. We really don't have an opportunity to monitor that. It's not a jurisdiction of ours, but it is of the, of the SROs. And so if there is a threat that's known, which could become a widespread concern, because my concern with mental health is not only that that individual student get help, but if there is any acting out that we can intervene on that could have catastrophic results, I would want my SROs involved in that. They may be able to ascertain information that may be deeper with regards to, again, a lot of our kids, what we're finding out is, well, yeah, they've been talking about that for a while on social media, they've been communicating on that, but that's not a jurisdiction that we have to have been able to do that, but the SROs would. And unfortunately, my concern is that timeliness is always an issue, whether that, again, is the safety of that individual, the safety of those around it. So that's why my questioning of that comes in, is that we have a different world that we're living in, and I know that the Sheriff's Department is trying to explore ways of being able to be more proactive in that regard. And that's what, what leads me to that belief, that if we have an issue, they may be able to put that and monitor that in a way that we can't, or at least they, they may look at whether they need to or not make that decision.
I think what Mr. Farmer said, there was a partnership that exists in the school system between those who are psychologists, the counselors, the social workers, and then the SROs, each having expertise in their own area. That partnership enables everyone to work together for the common good, to solve the problem. It would not be good if I were the person who had a gun going out and arresting people, I don't know anything about it. No, I don't, and I don't think the SROs want to have a PhD in psychology. We want to have your own area, that you work to areas together, so you can cover both areas, and that's what's, to me, terribly important.
Whenever we get a suicide, suicide ideation, that's medium to high risk, we always involve that sort of thing, because A, we want your input, B, we want to initiate a Baker Act and this, and C, they may have additional information. So you're correct, you see, we don't see that in this particular flow chart. I think it's important to write.
And I think that's really what I'm trying to understand, is when I see the flow chart, I'm sitting there thinking, the analytical, we're going to go A, and then we're going to go B, and then we go C, and I'm thinking, wait a minute, these guys should be notified, maybe.
Does this presentation, we see that ourselves, set up ten people, not going to be us?
Well, I'm going to address threat assessment. And Andy Garrison, to the Suicide Intervention or School Assistance Team that Mr. Yule addressed, which has been in existence for thirty-plus years, the threat assessment process for the school district is relatively new. It was adopted, I think, back in June 2012, so it's literally less than four years has it been in place. And this was, I mean, it's all, of course, various publicized school shooting and other incidents, but also, there have always been threats in the school, but there was never really a systematic process on how do we address this. It was kind of lumped up, two individual administrators and school staff, okay, if students made a threat, how do we address that? And so actually, Dr. Andy Knott, who was a school psychologist for the district at that time, this was something that he was interested in, and so kind of spearheaded the development of the Threat Assessment Manual. And the manual itself, it's heavily from the FBI Behavioral Sciences Union Guidelines Regarding Threat Assessment, Things to Look At in the Process, and so on. And the goal, really, of the threat assessment process is two-fold. First and foremost is safety of the school, including staff and students. But second is to provide assistance to the person making the threat, in terms of what type of support they need, why are they resorting to this approach, and so on, and giving them support. So it's not just excluding that student from school, whatever, it's the two, it's seven, two from protecting the school environment, but also giving assistance to that individual student. So looking at the flow chart here, with a threat assessment, the administrator does initiate the process, and to address Mr. Kennedy's concern, you can see on this one, there is a horizontal line that goes across, that as soon as the principal becomes aware of a threat, Student Services is notified, as well as law enforcement, if there's a threat imminent danger. So it doesn't, you know, wait till we go down and do screenings, and so on. If there's a feeling that this does represent a legitimate threat, those folks are notified immediately. Now, fortunately, most of the threats that we encounter aren't viewed as low risk or unfounded. In fact, this guy, dude, asks about statistics and so on, about three or four pages back, you'll see the table statistics, not only on the ones that, but various other interventions and so on. And what's interesting with threat assessment is that historically, actually, surprisingly, elementary students seem to have the most reported threat assessments. But of course, if you think about that, it's not necessarily too surprising. Now, those tend to be more of the low-risk variety, but they do make threats, I mean, young children, wanting to blow up the school, or going to do this and that. And when it's actually looked into, those are viewed as not necessarily credible, or they don't have the resources, means to actually pull off this threat. So it's oftentimes considered low risk, but it's still recorded as a threat. So if it's a low risk or unfounded, then at that point, in all cases, the parent is notified, and then there is a record created that is maintained by Student Services. So we do, even if it's viewed as low risk, we maintain a record of that in case something comes up down the road, and so on. But it's not going too, too much further. On the other hand, you can see if it's a medium or high threat level, then various things are, are done. And at that first level, the administrator, and they can delegate this to someone else, but they would conduct an initial interview, and so this, it just needs a check, affirmative, okay, what is the threat? Again, is it credible? Do they have the means? What precipitates the threat, and so on? And then they complete a, the level of threat assessment, in other words, that's the determining, is it low risk, medium risk, high risk, and so on. And then you can see over on the left-hand side, we have, if necessary, if it is viewed as potentially credible, something you can follow up on, then there is various screening steps. And ultimately, as you work your way through it, and down at the bottom, oftentimes, if the student is still in school, allowed to return to school, then some type of supervision plan might be implemented. In other words, to make sure when the student arrives at school, that, you know, they are safe, and they don't have anything, you know, good then that could present a hazard, and so on. Behavior contracts will be developed, and so on. So with this, and same statistics that Mr. Yule has quoted, we haven't had any serious threats or anything, you know, actual damage at the school. So, you know, we've got, the effective and the main benefit is that we now have a process in hand, rather than just in each individual school, kind of proceeding on their own, as far as how they're going to handle it. We have a procedure in place. And when we get into those lower levels, many of the same personnel that Mr. Yule talked about, the School Assistance Team, social workers, psychologists, counselors, are going to be involved in that, particularly when it gets into the supervision plan and providing support to that individual student.
Thank you, that was very, very clear.
Thanks for inviting us, and give us this opportunity to talk about some of the things that we, we do alongside of the school system. I'd like to talk about STP. It's an acronym for Safe Schools Interagency Team for Prevention, which was created back in 2005 from models in other, other counties by that superintendent and the sheriff and some other key people. And the, the concept was, what if we could look for warning signs early in a child's life that are there, but, you know, without the internet and some of the other things that affect kids? Back in those days, it was a lot more difficult, but what if we could connect those early warning signs through risk assessment, possibly share law enforcement information with the school system that we used to keep top secret, and try to prevent somebody who may grow up to be involved full-time in criminal activity, or who might be the next school shooter, or hurt themselves and possibly not be the most productive person in our, in our society? So with that, they decided that we would start sharing information with the school system from the law enforcement side, and then we would see what services we could offer the students based on what they have been through. So each and every morning, except for on the weekends, I do that for them, and the school resource officers review a data analysis report.
Analysis and M.
I'm keeping the M out. And it has a list of all the law enforcement activity involving students or juveniles in our county. So when they get to work in the morning, they look to see if students from the schools they're assigned had contact with law enforcement. Obviously, if a student has been through traumatic experience, we want to make sure we can get them the help that they need. Then at that point, after they look at the reports, they want to see what, what level of involvement should the SRO have. I know this from, from my own experience, some of these high-profile cases where we arrest parents, if there's drug activity at home, victim of domestic violence, the last thing you want is the student to go home and say, I was pulled into the SRO's office and talked about what happened last night. So we are very careful how we do that. And a lot of times, we use the guidance counselor, or whoever the principal, they make their designated make contact with that student. And then we see what interventions or what kind of services we can get for them. So three to four times a year, we bring all the key players together, the superintendent, the sheriff, as many SROs that can, can attend, the guidance counselor, social workers, and we have what we call an STP meeting. And basically, we go over the original concept of, of what is it designed to, to do with people from the community that are from, you know, the Centers, DCF, Kid Central, Department of Juvenile Justice, and even the State Attorney's Office, to see what services are out there. And it really works well. And it really works well when we can get those children, our student services, and try to stop something we know is gonna happen left unchecked. And that is really what the purpose of the STP program is.
And just to follow up, with STP, it's not just the SROs that make referrals, it can come from any one of these agencies. Guidance counselors will make referrals, teachers, if they see something of interest, they can make a referral. And then we will convene at the school level and determine if that child rises to the level of STP, and then we'll refer them to the actual program. Interestingly, in Valachia County, they just started a program similar to this this school year. And they are, I was at a meeting with them, and they were talking about it, like, hey, we've been doing that for ten years now. But it's starting to be, I was thinking that, I was thinking that. But it's something we've been doing, and it's worked well. I think we've got a hundred and forty? Somewhere around a hundred and forty students that have been in and are involved in the process. One of the issues you've got with it is there is no teeth to it. We can send recommendations, we can ask the parents to get involved, and if the parents choose not to follow through with recommendations, there's no teeth or bite to force that. And that's a statewide problem, is that without that, there's nothing to force parents into compliance. But, you know, at times, we want to make it happen, but we can't. And we know it needs to happen, but the parents can choose not to follow through. But we're doing everything on our part to make sure they do. And we provide them the positives as to why they want to have their children involved and what can happen, and help them along in the future.
And also during our doing on probation checks that we do quarterly, we try to focus on checking in on some of the STP or at-risk students out in the community. Trust me when I tell you, some of them are on probation, and the parents are really grateful when they see us show up, and it's working, it's working pretty well. We just started doing that two years ago with STP. And most of the young people that have a serious law enforcement issue, it definitely affects their mental health and wellbeing, so we keep a watch list. So we think it's going pretty well.
That's great. Again, impressed by the fact that everyone's working together, no one is taking it by themselves and running with the ball, ignoring everybody else. Everyone's working together, and everyone's following up, and I know you guys are great job following up on the benefits of curbs.
Well, an interesting thing with STP is a lot of agencies around the nation, now they're starting to figure it out, but it's that collaborative sharing of information. And, you know, pre-colombian, one reason it's called, I'd curve, is nobody shared any information about those students. And now we put this in place eleven years ago now, and now everybody else is starting to say, hey, we need to work on that. So once again, we're all before one another.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So we've got the School Justice Partnership Meeting tomorrow, I know you guys are involved with that, and we've had these discussions because we're, it seemed to be advanced in a lot of things that, you know, maybe not a lot of people know about, who are not directly involved with it, but it is a great program that we've already had in place. And so, like you said, with Valachia County, that's an opportunity for us to maybe help them develop a program. But, Ron, I want to, and Scott, I want to ask you, in reference to SERMI and the Renaissance Center, we're still involved, STP is still involved with students at that facility as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So they're involved, they're kind of the community partner then too with us, as far as they're working with us?
Nothing has changed as far as the services that SRO unit or the school relies. We have at-risk, risk students there, we have our IOP process with the sheriff's office.
Yeah, School Resource Officer sign there.
Yes.
Yes. So I guess I was just saying that, you know, they're kind of one of those community partners too that might be on the list, right, because they work pretty well with you all, with us?
Yes.
Those students.
We were thinking everyone was still part of the school.
Yeah, I got you. Thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen, just a question that, because I see, and let me first say, I cannot thank you enough, I know what you do every day. Sergeant Farmer has helped raise me over the last number of years, and I've valued that greatly, because he would often, you know, help me to understand the value of the SRO beyond just being a parent. And I want to tell you that I think that the amount of time you spend at the elementary school, because there sometimes is a misunderstanding that you try and spend a lot of pre-time or time educating there to not have to spend as much time later than you do at the secondary level. But at the secondary level, you're doing, I think, a lot of these, a lot of the resources are spent in this action plan. What I'm wondering is, is are you exploring ways to also, with the technology that we're dealing with today? Our students are communicating more, whether it's through their own devices, through our school devices, and through social media, to provide a virtual intervention that provides you with some information that can assist you in that? And that's really what I was looking at.
We don't have a School Resource Officer Facebook page per se, but many of the SROs do have Facebook pages, and they're friends with the kids and students, and they constantly interact with them that way. On the virtual side of things is now that we've got the Campus Crime Stoppers, we've actually had campus crime, through all the middle school life paths, we've actually had Crime Stop, Campus Crime Stopper tips come in that have led to Baker Acts, as they reported their friends who were suicidal, who were just depressed and things like that. And once we got involved, it led to that next step.
So the Crime Stoppers, is that an app that we've put, or a link that we've put on that, so they have that kind of instant for Campus Crime Stoppers? Is there anything that can be, you know, looked at, explored, or maybe you are doing it, and you may or may not be able to share it with us, so that if there are things that are happening beyond the walls of that, that is monitoring and letting you all know, hey, you know what, there's something within a geographical area that's coming up? I know one of the challenges that we have is that there is anonymous postings that take place, and how do, there's no person that singularly can do that, so we're often dependent on software solutions.
We have our Crime Analysis Unit, they access a lot of Facebook, and they're able to get into specifics of it. But on a regular basis, just happened Friday, there was a Facebook page that came out that was talking about a fight amongst kids Friday night. And what they'll do is, when they receive that information, they'll either send it to the SRO, or they'll forward it out to patrol. But yeah, we've got a lot of people that are involved with different Facebook sites in different ways. You know, if it's private, it makes it a little more difficult.
We have to really rely on parents, and let the students report a lot of potentially harmful social media postings. A lot of the complaints come in from parents after hours through 911. We have people on duty twenty-four hours a day and detectives on call that can respond to the home, any, I'm gonna bring a weapon to the school type threats, we immediately send law enforcement to the home to engage with the parents. It is a battle that will never end and it keeps expanding. Even a throwaway phone can get free Wi-Fi at McDonald's. So, you know, we don't have twenty-four-hour people that monitor social media, as you can imagine, what a challenge that would be, but we do pretty well on getting potentially dangerous complaints. We've had several kids at home talking about suicide, and their friends reported it with their cellphone that they're probably not supposed to use at school. We were able to go to their house and, you know, institute the Baker Act or those type.
Please describe Stopper app, you know, link is on there, so that it's at least one more.
If it's Crime Stoppers, we can get them from the students while they're sitting in class. It's huge.
Well, you know, one reason we asked you to come, all of the Student Services to come is to be able to give this information out to the public, because I think sometimes they don't know what's being done in the school system, just how broad and deep the interventions are. So I think by listening to this or hearing this, or having maybe an article in the paper written by, they'll see that the school system and the service department are covering it pretty well. And any suggestions they have that we could do a better job, please give them to us, because that's what we want to do, do the best we can do.
Could you repeat how you access that Crime Stoppers?
The app.
In Campus Crime Stoppers, it's a program that we do at the school level, and in the middle schools and the high schools that have iPads given to them, we put the app on the iPad. So they, if it's a school-based iPad, it has the Campus Crime Stoppers app, they can go to that. We also have flyers all over the school, which will give the phone number they can call. It's all anonymous, so they can call it anonymously, they can go and do it through the app, they can also do it through email. So there's three ways that they can get it out there. Or they can text it, too.
Do you know the number?
It is eight-eight-eight-AnyTips. Yeah, one eight-eight-eight-AnyTips.
It's also in the code of.
Yeah, it's in the code of conduct.
I believe it's on our webpage.
Yeah.
I'm sure. The back pumper.
Yeah.
And it's on the school.
It's, it's the same exact number for our campus, for our regular Crime Stoppers, it's the same information, except when it comes in, if it comes in as a school tip, it gets funneled through the School Resource Officers. So it's the same basic county program, except it's specifically designed for students.
And someone calling it a tip is eligible for reward.
Yes.
Huge.
If I recall you, that has been a way that you use that tool when you're trying to find information that you don't, by making sure that those students are aware of that there's a reward, and that's been very successful.
And I don't want to get too far a tangent, but we've had, you know, we've got drugs, like I said, we've averted some possible suicides, we've had bullying incidents, we've had issues of sexual misconduct that was occurred in a home that was reported through Crime Stoppers to somebody else. So it's been really effective, it's been a really good program. And Jim Serenich, who heads up our Campus Crime Stoppers through the Sheriff's Office, he's been really excited by the numbers of tips that the school, that the kids have been generating. In the middle schools, the SROs will go and show the kids on the iPad how to turn on the app, and how to use it, and how to access it.
Yes, thank you very much. Ms. Hump, who is going to continue?
Tomas.
Tomas, I'll start this, I'll talk about our daily crisis intervention. This is something that goes on in all of our schools on a daily basis, something that we do routinely. We get referrals a good old-fashioned way from other kids, from teachers. I wanted to pass out these cards real quick here, I don't think they're in your package. But these are some suicidal symptom cards that the social work team developed about a dozen years ago, and we had these out to all school employees, so that they're, we're all on the same page as far as what to look for, as far as kids who may exhibit suicidal thoughts, or talking to other kids, maybe depressed. A lot of the suicidal kids are depressed, and some of those symptoms you can spot, you know, maybe they're, they may not look sad, they may be angry, may not have a good appetite, they're not sleeping well, those kinds of things. And sometimes teachers are aware of that, and they let us know, and we're able to intervene. And all counselors, social workers, psychologists, we're trained to be able to counsel and intervene with these students who are in crisis. And we're like the first line, you know, to talk to these kids and try and help them get into a safe place, so that they can open up, and we can try to help them and identify their problems, and basically get their parents involved, so that they're aware of the situation. Our main goal is to let the parents know what's going on. Sometimes they know, sometimes these kids are in therapy, they may have a session scheduled with their therapist in a day or so, so maybe the parents could get them in earlier, or we encourage them to get mental health treatment if it requires that. But this is something that we do on a daily basis, it's happening in our schools right now, or we're here. I mean, I don't do it every day, but in every school, there's this going on every day. And only a handful of these result in a Baker Act. You know, not all of them require hospitalization. If we can get a plan going, get treatment going, and we follow up with them at school, then they should be okay. And that's what we trust that they are. But we have not been able to identify all of them, obviously. And a lot of kids have a lot of different stressors these days, you're aware of those, high-stakes tests, academic riggers, overscheduling, fewer healthy stress outlets like PE and recess. Media saturation is a big one, too, everybody's connected all the time, and, you know, it used to be a note handed in class that bullying somebody, but now it's a, a text that goes viral, you know, so things happen a lot faster, and a lot more kids are involved. Sleep problems, too little sleep, actually, sleep is one of the best stress reducers, and a lot of our kids don't get that, so there's a lot of things that contribute to why kids become suicidal or depressed, or sometimes they may want to deal with that stress by cutting themselves, that's something that they learn can kind of reduce the stress, increases the neurotransmitters in the brain, and they can kind of feel better for a minute, you know? But that's obviously not the best way to deal with that. We like to help them figure out different ways to deal with stress, to cope. I guess other things are family disruption, divorce, parental stress, our kids maybe have their own health concerns like asthma, or ADHD, or even obesity. So those are the kinds of things that stressing our kids out, we're there to try and help them. And we're hoping that we are helping, I feel that we are. I think the next page, is that? Any questions? So the next page talks about the various interventions that we've done over the past two and a half years. As you can see, it's been pretty consistent. I think 2014, thirteen to fourteen was a pretty busy year. We had lots of child abuse cases that were reported, lots of suicidal interventions, and self-injury interventions.
Why are the threat assessments so low? We just saw that slide on the threat assessment flowchart. I thought we did threat assessments through SIT and all those medium, high-risk, low-risk cases of suicidal tendencies.
Well, the threat assessment isn't to intervene with kids who are suicidal, it's for kids that may be posing a threat school-wide. They may be texting threats of treating up the school, calling on style, that kind of thing. We dealt with a student like that yesterday at one of our schools, and they didn't have the means to actually go through with that, but.
So there's.
Just not a kid that's just threatening to hurt themselves, or threatening others, and so they're deemed a threat, say, a school-wide threat, and those are the ones that go through the threat assessment process, which is separate from the daily crisis interventions that we do.
So the eight elementary school threats, can you give me a general picture of what those were?
Well, I think if I progress, there can be things, like a child saying, you know, well, I'm that, my teacher, I'm going to bring a bomb to school, or I'll bring a gun and shoot everyone, something like that. And that's like, most of those are, again, considered low-risk, as you know, they don't have the means. And in many cases, they don't have the coping skills to address their frustration angle or whatever in a more appropriate manner, so we just make the threat. We'll talk about later on as far as interventions, some things that we do to address that. But those are the types of things that elementary students might have a threat. But again, as Mr. Gonzalez said, threat assessment is only a threat towards others or the school personnel, those types of things. Self-injury threats or whatever, we call it, or eventual suicide, or the, like, those types of things. Because you can see a separate category for self-injury, which do not necessarily be suicide, but then you have one, two, actually, threat, suicide as well. And we could do a threat assessment on a child, but they don't rise to the level of risk. So a threat assessment, I would have, you know, it's a low-risk, low-risk, so just be resolved at that point.
So the data here on child abuse, are those child abuse cases reported in our schools, or is this from DCF, from the county, reported?
Out of the school where a school person has made the report, as were required, you know, we're mandated reporters, so those are all those that are generated.
You know, that'd be a good point to make, who has to report in the school system, who must report it if, say, a child says he's been abused? Is it just one or two people, or is it every person?
I think everybody, even private citizens now are mandated reporters, everybody. But we've been doing that forever, you know? We used to be like the lead person that would make the report, but now DCF wants the actual school teacher that who has firsthand information to make that report, and oftentimes, we do it together. We get on the hotline together and make the report. So that may be the reason why a lot of reports are coming down.
The Baker Act information, is that from, is that the ones that are generated at school, or is that just from the county's stats from the sheriff's office?
I believe that's just strictly school-based reports for Baker Act.
Well, that's what I see, if the off-campus Baker Act, is that just non-related to a campus event then?
Yeah, and now one thing to consider is, those are the off-campus ones that get reported to the schools. We average about 250 juveniles Baker acted every year, which they all don't get reported to schools. It's up to the parent to come forth if a child is Baker acted off-campus, it's up to the responsibility of the parent, if they want to let the school know, to let them know. want to let the school know to let them know. So there's actually 250 total Baker Acts countywide. So that's, that number, that's when you look at the on-campus and the off-campus, they're kind of close, but the actual, that's just what was reported to the school that occurred off-campus.
So the off-campus doesn't have to report to the school?
No, correct. There's no reporting mechanism there. So if it was something that occurred over the summer, the SRO might get back at the beginning of the school year, touch base with the parents and everything's resolved, everything's fine. Could be homeschool, could be a dropout, could be any number of things. That's why those numbers are so close. But, you know, we've seen statewide a marked increase in Baker Acts since 2002. They're up, I want to say 89% since 2002. In 2014, I think there was 180,000 Baker Acts across the state. And we've noticed an increase in the schools as well. And understand that we, we use a Baker Act last resort. You know, we understand that that's, you know, that is something that we use as a last resort. If we can't put plans in place through the school to help deal with the situation, that's when we're looking to go with the Baker Act. I think that's one of the reasons they're so high out in the community because a deputy, when he shows up at house, has no other resources. They're dealing with what they've got in front of them. Where we've got a child in front of us, you know, we've got school social workers, school guidance counselors, we know we've got a team already that we can handle some of these low-risk threats. So we try to defer to our people first before we, before we go to Baker Act. But of course, you run into those situations where it's a crisis mode or that they're just at that point where they're not coming off of, you know, "I'm going to commit suicide" and that's their plan. And no team is going to change their mind and that's what we've got to do with Baker Act.
So the self-injury reporting is obviously not all being done on campus. Those are injuries that have been detected when a child comes to school usually?
Yeah, yeah. They don't usually come to school. It's usually at home, in their room or in the bathroom. But we get when the McNabb identity, that we're on the same level or anything like that. And we used to put them all on the same form, all on those suicide form, but we realized that adult kids we could are wanting to kill themselves. Like I said, it's mostly a coping mechanism.
I realize though, statistics are not necessarily really tense. Sometimes what we think, they tell us. But one of the things that seems to be sticking out, and Mr. Dodd brought some attention to, is that we have a threat assessment like in elementary. This year, there's showing eight, eight threats. We're halfway, a little more than halfway through the year. That would seem to show that there's like twice as many than is last year just by, by the number of months. What's interesting is there's only showing that there's two medium and high-risk threats though that have been noted. But if I look at previous years, they're in the double digits in elementary, those same categories of 17 respectively in 2014, 2015, 23 in 2013, 2014. But in that year, there was zero threat assessments and last year, there was only seven threat assessments. I'm curious why we've already had eight threat assessments in elementary, but we have a very limited number of high-risk scenarios.
The difference is the suicide and the threat assessment. We don't do a threat assessment on the potential suicides.
So that's, that's, that's the difference of where that is then?
Yes.
Because again, the other statistics seem to be kind of in line, you know, child abuse is about, right now, if we're halfway through and then if I doubled it, we're kind of in that same range. But that just number seems to be almost twice the last year and even more than the previous year.
And it is, I'm assuming you'll get a lot of the threat assessment. That is rising compared to, you know, since probably halfway through the school year. Sergeant Palmer and I had talked about that, that is why we put the first two quarters up here, that we are seeing a rise in some of these things. But the reason that it doesn't match the suicide is, the potential suicides, that is for someone injuring, you know, plopping themselves. The threat assessment is for when they are making threats to harm others or, you know, a mass amount of people or another person or, you know, at an activity or a situation. It's more the broad, it's just them.
And I know that the answer was is sometimes it's the means of whether they're able to carry out that threat can play a role. Obviously, that's a concern the boards has faced since we've had recent instances where an incident involving hurting oneself can lead over to hurting someone else. And so that's where that threat assessment is becoming a little bit of a gray area with coming to deal with security of all involved. And that's, I guess, why I'm mentioning this, because that continues to be, I think, a concern that we keep looking at.
So are those, the, the, you said this, this, we have both the self-injury, both the, the type of threat assessment.
Could you come up to the mic?
Years ago, we had everything on one form, okay? Because really, truly, years ago, as you remember, Mr. Dodd, that we had, if somebody's going to injure themselves or someone else, we take that as a potential suicide threat. But basically, over the years, we found that not everything fit because of what's going on now and how we record it, how we intervene. So that's why we had to develop the other, meaning self-injury, it does not always mean, very seldomly means suicide, but there's always a potential risk even in that, that somebody could cut too deep or could use an instrument that's too lethal. So we could easily cross over and go to the, to the next process. And the same thing with threat assessment. That really was dealing with homicidal. We used to put, the view that we had, we kind of incorporate that in terms of reporting when we have our suicide report release forms. But now, we've evolved into an area where we have different scenarios, much broader, you know, use of that particular terminology. And the threat assessment involves a different, slightly different process. But they all seem to be together and they all overlap a little bit, but that's what takes the professionals to go ahead and look and say, "Okay, what do we really have here?" You know. Oftentimes, as an example, we might have a suicidal student and that might even overlap into an abuse situation. And we might have a suicidal student, you're right, that might end up being, as you probe a little deeper, maybe some homicidal tendencies. So all those things do overlap and that's why we have all these people involved in it to kind of sort it out and see what we have, what we need to do and how we're going to protect both the individual and the others. I hope that makes sense in terms of explaining that quickly, but that's kind of the history of that.
It does, because these become public and I don't want there to be sometimes a misunderstanding as to that, because it is, it isn't entirely clear-cut. And that's what...
And you're right. That's why we have in our particular plan and policy and procedures, we have what we call shared responsibility. That's, we get two professionals. And what you don't see on the student services referral form or reporting form for suicides, as an example, we have three. Anytime medium, high-risk, we have our two professionals, but we also have an SRO in the room too. And we work real closely. But you don't hear about those things because we're doing behind the scenes. But there's a very thorough team, a very good team, good results. And, you know, it's always going to be maybe a couple percentage points where you're not going to get information, the student's not going to come forth, someone's not going to report it. And of course, once in a while, they, they will get it through. But by and large, the teams work very well together and have been doing so for a long time. But I think that's a good question. I hope the answers, you know, helps out a little bit more.
Thank you.
If I could, I'd address the threat assessment question as far as why or this year and so on. I think awareness is also part of the issue here. As I mentioned before, the threat assessment process is relatively new. That is, it's been in place for less than four years. So if you go back to 13, 14 school year, you can see that there was only four reported threat assessments. And those were all at the high school level. And so each year, excuse me, in the introduction, it went through where there was staff training to be done from over the administrators and so on. So each year, the staff is trained in the suicide intervention or the crisis intervention process as well as the threat assessment process. So I think part of it is now they're more aware of it and realize, "Okay, yeah, I should record this or report it." And so, in the past, where, again, somebody in kindergarten makes a threat to another child, "Mom, I'm going to bring a gun and shoot you." In the past, that might be just handled by, you know, talking with the principal, whatever. Now, they might be more prone to report that as an actual threat.
Thank you. Can we get the Baker Act offload?
Yeah. We used to get reports of Baker Acts off-campus routinely, but we don't anymore . So we rely on self-reporting more parents. But it's usually the guidance counselor or guidance head in the high school that is, follows up with those students. Oftentimes, the social workers are also in contact with them, try to follow up with them to help ensure that they're, they're still safe and they're getting treatment or that they have a safe place to vent their feelings. So we're kind of the go-to person for that too. We also have access on the Sky Program to, to kids who have had Baker Acts or self-injury reports or child abuse reports in all the schools. So that when we're reading with a student, we know a little bit about the history. So, I guess, any questions about that?
No, no, that information is confidential. It's not, where anyone can access...
No, it's not general law, just, just the, the social workers. And I believe I have access to that and I think it's illustrated to you too. It's not, it's not a general rule, but you can look at them just through the people that are certified to do that. If you're right, there's HIPAA regulations without that. So we don't like to broadcast that either. We know it's confidential.
Thank you.
Well, just to go through some of the interventions and things that might be done in the school. So as I said, before we touch upon, you know, if a student makes a threat or whatever, how might we handle that? Well, one of the first things that services that are available to students in the school is social skills training. And just to explain what that is, that is not necessarily targeting a specific skill or skill deficit that a particular student may have. Rather, it's a broad curriculum covering things, you know, like empathy, sharing, taking turns. And you have a series of lessons dealing with those various topics. You might have a group of students who've been having some interpersonal difficulties and they would participate in that type of group. And each lesson, you go over a different topic and do gold playing and those types of things to try to help them learn that particular skill. Then there's more specialized, if you want to call it that, interventions for a particular problem area. So it gives an example of anger management training. So students who are having difficulties with anger management might be referred by the counselor or a teacher. And we would do a group with them on, again, rather than getting angry, how can you do that in a better way? Deep reading or other techniques and so on. Another example might be students with anxiety difficulties. So we might have a specialized group, if you will, of just students who are referred for difficulties in that particular area. Then, we also collaborate and consult frequently with community service providers. In other words, we realize that oftentimes, students need services beyond what's available in the school, particularly if it involves family issues and so on. While we can work with the child, oftentimes, the parents aren't available during the school day or whatever to come in and meet. So oftentimes, those students might be involved or referred for private counseling or involved in other agencies. And we would try to communicate with those service providers as far as what follow-up we can do with the school, what issues we see in the school, so they can address those as well and trying to bring about a consistent coordinated intervention approach. Also, many of the schools, in fact, 14 of our schools are formal positive behavior support schools. What positive behavior support, the whole premise of that is that rather than assuming a student should know how to behave, that if they, just like with any other skill, be it math, be it whatever, if a student doesn't have the skill, PBS says, "We teach the skill." And so the idea is that, you know, you work on specific skill development and then there's reinforcement for actual implementation of that. So it's a positive approach to increasing or improving behavior. And most of those are school-wide approaches. In other words, it's not just targeted for specific students. The school as a whole adopts that and says, this is, you know, I'm sure when you visit the schools, you've seen various things where the school has their goals or an acronym that oftentimes relates to the motto. So like I work on the La Canto campus, some of the schools have a role. And it'll stand for, it's like responsibility and so on, and spells out things. And the students are popped back from day one. "This is our school plan. This is what we value. This is what we want you to do or behave." And then there are other behavior curricula for students that, you know, at the positive behavior support or school-wide level, maybe they're still not quite following in line or doing everything that you would like. So then those can be pulled for a more small group or individual intervention, if you will. And that goes back to the social skills or specific kind of skill development that we might try to work on. So those are just some of the things. And then, I think Dodd has...
Actually, what we're talking about here in terms of student services, sorry.
What we're talking about is services, student services and our approach to how we handle certain situations. Called one of the big three, I mean, we have the training, we have the interventions. And as Brett was talking about, he was mentioning also the educational program. And so basically, we're over here talking about education. And if you look at the health courses, you'll see that in the health courses, even back in 1984, the one thing they left in place and the one thing that we have in place today is that we do have topics on such things as self-injury, depression and suicide. And they are covered in the health classes at the secondary level, both in middle schools and high schools. And that's a big deal because it helps, you know, to prevention, you know, sharing ideas, facilitating dialogue. So we have that going on. In addition to that, the SROs, as Ron will probably talk about a little bit later, are in the health classes, they're doing some education. I'm in health classes, or we're, we're in health classes, I'm sorry, doing education in terms of some of the things that we have for initiatives. And there's other agencies that are in the health classes as well. So like I tell the kids in the health classes, one of the most important classes they're going to have because they don't really think about the idea that how important they are in terms of their emotional, physical health. But that's something they take away for the rest of their lives in addition to their regular education. Having said that, just to share with you that the student services department has been working on an OSS initiative for several years now. And I think we're on the third year of that. And that was designed to help reduce out-of-school suspensions. And we even have, some of the schools are now working on some of the in-school suspensions. And what we're trying to do there through various means is to change the way a person perceives what happens in her life. For instance, something happens and it's not always the action that causes the problem. It's sometimes our belief about it. Breakup of a girlfriend, okay? Fight with a teacher, peer conflict. But if we can work with these people to help them understand how to process information and come up with other solutions in terms of how they're thinking about it, things like depression and suicide often will take a backseat to common sense in seeking assistance. So we have that in place as well. As far as goal setting and regular follow-up, it's really, really very interesting what you don't hear about, you don't see. We have a lot of other crises that go on. And some of them look simple on the surface, but if you stop to think about a high school student who is flunking, how maybe that student is going to be rejected because of a test score to college or the military, or they're having some type of an academic problem. We sit and we help develop those attendance goals and we follow up and we make sure they have a plan, some type of education is going to be productive for them. And that is a crisis, an individual crisis that can cause all kinds of depression. So we're doing more of the subtle things all the time, the counselors and school social workers and the resource officers and psychologists and all those people that are involved in our lives, including their teacher. So I just want you to remember that basically, there's a, there's a full, full-front attack here on everything. We're, we're out there, they're out there and they're doing a good job. And I think we're making a difference in Citrus County. And I would like to add this one thing. When I started doing this was quite a few years ago, Roger Weaver was the superintendent, today's Mrs. Himmel is. Casey Kears was the director of student services. Leonard Giordano was the coordinator. Today, Mrs. Alaradah is the director and Ms. Humboldt is the coordinator. And through that whole time, from A to B, and it's been a long time, I know, everybody in the administration, the board, as well as the superintendent, has stepped up and allowed us to be proactive. You can see through evolution, we keep moving ahead. So I, I really take my hat off to everybody involved in that. Thank you.
Try to be brief. I just wanted to really quickly go over some of the classes and instruction we give through the SRO program as far as the lessons that... the SRO program as far as the lessons that might affect those students' mental health. We start at first grade with a junior focus program where this was at the request of teachers, surveying teachers about getting kids to keep their hands to themselves and not to hit and harass and bother each other. And then we have five other lessons. Then we move up to fifth grade, which has a standalone anti-bullying component. It's around week eight. And in addition to that, when the SROs get into the middle school, there's an initiative, I believe it's with the sixth grade, where the guidance counselors go with the SROs and they team-teach. Seeing it's phenomenal. You get the school aspect and the law enforcement part of it as far as any kind of criminal repercussions for acts of bullying. And then you get also in middle school, you have Know the Law, which is in seventh grade and then you get into Choices for High School, which has a component focusing on the criminal penalties for battery, harassment, stalking, cyberbullying, those type of things. Also, I'd like to add really quickly, on this Friday, three, two new SROs and a veteran are going through, maybe, I'll go slow. YMHFA, Mental Health First Aid for youth, Youth Mental Health First Aid. And that's going to be an all-day training where it's teaching people from the community that have a lot of contact with children from the school, maybe the church, the school resource officers, to recognize early signs of mental illness with young people from ages of 12 to 18. And many of our school resource officers, and keep in mind, we'll have about half of our squad will be fairly new next year from turnover and promotion, but a great number of sheriff's office employees have been through CIT, other acronym, Crisis Intervention Training hosted by the centers, which also includes going up to the centers and the tour and bringing people with mental illness in and Q&amp;A, question and answer period of what their experiences have been with law enforcement. So, that when they see that that officer is wearing their, that they've been through that training, that they have an understanding of what types of things they might be going through with their schizophrenia or their mental illness. And those are things that we're focusing on because they are truly the most difficult to deal with and the most time-consuming for our officers. Thank you.
Sergeant Farmer. In order to meet this rise of needed services at the elementary schools, the SROs have reassigned officers. So, that our middle schools now are not, we're doing some sharing of SROs. Can you just update us on that, please, on how that's working and just bring that?
Sure. Calls for service, which could be anything from an irate parent at the front desk to a child abuse case or something that may require more than a counseling session, seem to have been on the rise in elementary school at that level for a while. And then, when we had different things occurring across the country, I mean, I don't know how else to explain to you, but elementary schools are very vulnerable. You know, they're mostly staffed with not to be gender-specific females and young children. So, in order to get that extra coverage, we had the middle school, school resource officers start going over and doing the first, third and fifth grade curriculum. I missed the. And we used the sergeants to cover one day at the middle school and then we now have a flow. There are pros and cons to both things, obviously. Switching school resource officers at the middle school level creates a lack of continuity. They don't, a lot of the times, Sergeant Frank and I have been out of the loop for a little while, so they don't recognize us as opposed to seeing that same deputy in the school every day. Things are starting to change a little bit where the calls for service are going down a little bit. And like I said, I'm a big fan of having a middle school officer at their school more, but I still think that there is a high value when those fifth graders come over to your middle school and you've taught them the focus program for fifth grade. The cheers when they introduce their SRO during orientation usually are higher than most other people getting introduced. As Mr. Mullin would know, when I was the school resource officer there, the cheers were a little bit louder. So, I really, you know, that was a decision, you know, made above me. We have some opportunities to relook at things and to see where coverage is needed. And obviously, I'm always on board for more school resource.
How are the more school resource officers, would we need to cover the middle schools full-time again? Two. Two, okay.
And what about the elementary? Yes.
Oh, you would need quite a few. I was speaking of getting back to the original coverage that we had. I mean, we've done, I've taught at, at least five elementary schools just by myself, but that means if I'm there on a Monday, you won't see me again until next Monday.
If we were full staff and we had the program the way we used to where it was designated, where somebody was solely in the middle school, if we could get back to that, we would need an additional seven SROs just for the elementary level. And then by that point, you're probably dealing with another sergeant because of the additional manpower. So, and there's actually a bill going through the senate right now.
The senate.
That they're pushing to have an SRO at every school.
It's be 1215.
Okay.
I'd like that to happen.
And then that was the original goal for the sheriff's office, was the Sheriff Dossie Wanneman, SRO at every school in the county.
Yes.
And then, of course, the budget started to tank and everything else and we would like to see it.
We would like to see the funding that the state sends us along with it because I think this entire board, the community, we support that, but we could use some additional funding to make that happen.
And we're currently throwing some ideas around about a different schedule for the SROs to try to balance it a little more. Don't know how it's going to, we've got some ideas of how we want it to work, you know, we'll present it to the sheriff and the superintendent and see if it's something we want to go with.
But if you went back to, if you had two SROs that would go back to the middle schools and would cover them full-time, the elementary school SRO would cover, how many schools? Do they each have two schools to cover?
Yeah, two schools each. I'd be able to look at it on paper, but if you went, that's six, it's two. And actually, one would only have one, so we could actually still have a partial flow.
It sizes it for the chip. Some schools are very small, so.
Right. So, but we could literally, with two more officers, we could get back to our full coverage at the middle schools and then have one SRO for every two elementary schools, basically. Okay.
Good clarity. You pointed.
Okay. And just to follow up, the both bills are, have been actually rapidly going through committees and it's just, the question's going to be whether they'll send funding with those requirements because I believe that's to have one at every school, not just simply that one would cover multiple schools.
Right. Perfect words. I just want to bring your attention to this. Guys in green here are my folks. I just want to share with you some of the stuff that I was, when we started off, the SROs, we started off, the school social workers, we, we were actually poor and poor. So, I think we should really increase the funding for these, gentlemen. Hopefully, we get to a point somewhere where we can have a few more social workers, too. And I think we would still be good if we had one at each school. It would be a really big payoff for the good sense, really good stuff, just by being restructured the way we are a little bit, if you're like spending a lot of time in secondary, it makes me feel best to be for that as well.
I totally agree with you. I'd like to see that occur.
And Mr. Yule, if you can step up the mic, though, I got a question for you.
Seriously?
Yes, seriously. We got to get this on the record so people can hear that are watching on TV. So, right now, how many?
This is covered nationally.
How many full-time school social workers do we have right now?
Well, last count, I believe we have five. Is that correct?
I have it right.
Yes, five.
So, definitely, you all have your hands full as well.
We do and I'm not complaining. I just want to let you know that, I'm just trying to tell the historical fact, which you know, because I used to work closely with you as well before you rose to great heights here. But the thing of it is, I just think we do need all these people, including the SROs and the psychologists and the student services. I think what happens, to be honest with you, is that because we work in the shadows, I don't mean like we work in the shadows because of what we're doing is illegal. I mean, we work quietly, we can't really discuss many of the things we do because they are sensitive and people just don't really realize how few of those people are out there doing this type of work. And we can show you statistically through self-injury, through OSS referrals, for instance, that we work with, through the suicide, through the broad loss, through all those things, that we are worthy of having a few more people for the benefit of the district. So, anyways, that's my plug for today. By the way, you know, I'm retiring very soon, so if you could get a couple of people, that'd be good.
We need a couple of people to replace you, is that right?
As long as he works, it might be three.
I didn't mean that. I mean, I just want to make sure it gets plugged in before I go, you know? Because I, one thing I am, I'm vested in this community, I'm vested in this department and I'm very proud of what we've had done and what we do and I just want to make sure that I keep putting that out there for everybody to know. Thanks.
About wrapping it up, you have a slide in your, on the PowerPoint. It's about professional development. We listed the professional development that the social workers, the school counselors, the school psychologists have been through and the, Marian Busaka was here, I think she had to leave on self-injury. All these things are related to, somehow related to mental health, mental health issues. Terry Cooper Sednet, that was what Sergeant Frank was talking about, or Sergeant Farmer the next one, the Youth Mental Health First Aid. Terry Cooper with Sednet has done a lot of training with our district. She is just a wonderful wealth of knowledge and can come in, you know, during the school day. With Sednet, it's a grant-type program, so she's given so much funding where we've been able to get some training. The only reason that we're not going to the youth mental health this Friday is because it's a, part of it is a teacher work day. So, we didn't want to pull teachers out of that, but we just had a training on the youth mental first aid. And then Marilyn Bloom, some of you are familiar with her, with loss and grief. It can be from death to divorce to kids being in dependency, being split up, which obviously affects children mentally. Human trafficking, Sunshine Arnold has come and done professional development on that. Human trafficking, again, students, kids that have been raised in homes where there are serious mental issues and they resort to human trafficking, which is getting into the sex trading and all of that. And then just some other ones, excuse me, listed down that I won't go into every one of them, but I, we do, we are always, like Mr. Yule said, proactively seeking ways that we can educate not only the social workers, the school psychologists, but also staff, teachers. Teachers have been able to attend a lot of these trainings on youth mental health training, trauma-informed care. And it's not trauma like brain trauma, it's like trauma, you know, when they've seen just very traumatic events in their lives that really affect them. And then the last slide is the resources and this is listed on there, but you have, actually have a handout that gives you a list of community-based resources, individual counseling individuals that have been added on there and they're put on there and then there's that disclaimer at the bottom that Mr. Bradshaw gave us and we put on there. We don't recommend any of these people. We provide this as a resource for parents when they come in, they're seeking information or help with their children or with family issues. We can provide them with this list and then they can, you know, they're on their own to try to find some help. Thank you for your endurance. There's a lot to mental health and a lot of information to share, but we appreciate you giving us the opportunity.
Very important. Thank all of you very much.
Thank you.
Let me ask a question now. You have the code, Student Conduct also coming in?
Miss Alagretta.
Miss Alagretta.
Yes.
And SERMI has a report. How long is the Student Conduct Code in SERMI? What I'm thinking is SERMI is a town as well as here and if there was the possibility of trade. You're okay with where you are?
I was interested in hearing the presentation.
Let me ask the board about lunch. Do you want to go straight through or?
I keep going.
I'd like to take a break. I would like to let SERMI get theirs checked off before we break for lunch.
That's a question. Do you want to break for lunch or? Ms. Ginger wants to.
I'd like to break for lunch.
She would like to. So, you want to take, have SERMI report and then take a lunch break?
Whatever he says, if there's a majority.
Okay, okay. That's a good idea. And do you mind?
No, not at all.
Okay. We're going to have SERMI report, then we'll take a break for lunch and then come back and, and we'll have Brad start reporting. Yeah. But you have to be here. We have a visitor in the back. Did you need something? Did you need something?
Thanks very much for bumping us. I hope you enjoyed your lunch, but thanks to Regina for letting us be on. We're going to be brief. I've got about five slides of statistical data that we have and some of it obviously is incomplete because we haven't finished this school year, but I'll try to get through this rather quickly. The first slide you're going to see is attendance slide. And what we've done is we've pulled data from 2013, 2014, when it was the Renaissance Center, and then our data for the last two years. Now, obviously, this year is just for August through December. We haven't included January in that yet. And I'll be the first one to sit here and tell you that when I talked to you all two years ago, we talked about 90% being our goal. And I'd love to sit here and make an excuse to not be 90%, but I'm not going to. We need to work harder, we need to do better. You know, I've pushed Heather and her staff to try to figure out a way to get us to 90% and that's going to continue to be our goal as long as we're working here because I believe that unless the students are getting to school, we can't provide the services and the rate of change we need to get them back to their base school. So, we've fallen short in that goal, but it's not for lack of trying, trust me. The next slide is going to talk about the number of students that we've returned to base school and that have come back to us. I think we've kind of exceeded expectations in this go-around. The top one is the 64 students that we sent back to school last year. 70%, 77% of those have stayed in school. We're very proud of that number. We, and obviously, either one of these numbers could change daily, but so far, 77% of them have stayed in school. This year, obviously, we've sent back 45 students already and it's kind of too early to tell how many of those are going to return to us. I think one of the things, though, that's interesting about this is all of last year, we only sent 64 students back. This year already, we've sent 45 students back. So, I think the students and the parents are starting to understand that you're really not going to go back unless you do exactly what we need you to do and what you're going to need to go back and stay in school. So, we've been able to get more students prepared to go back to school in the first half of this year than we did last year because the students and parents are starting to believe this is what it's going to take to get out and we're not going to let you go without it. So, any, and you can stop me with any questions on these slides as we go. So, the next one is the suspension days. And we, again, we pulled data from 2013 and 2014, both bus suspensions and school suspensions. We work really hard at trying to come up with other consequences besides kids not coming to school. The bus situation has been one of turmoil for us since we started because just like Ms. Farmer behind me, we can't find enough bus drivers. So, that's been a source of contention, but we do have, we are doing better now this year with that as we took Mr. Mullin's advice and we have bus drivers slash behavior specialist slash secretary slash whatever else we can slash and.
School administrator.
Yeah, exactly. To get, to get more people on the road. So, but you can see the suspension data. We would like to improve that even more. We think these are too many suspension days for our students. And national data and national research will tell you that any type of student surveys, they do not deem suspensions as a punishment. It just doesn't feel like a punishment to them to be able to stay at home. So, we try to do that as little as possible. Obviously, there are some safety concerns for other students and different things where we have to utilize that, but we try very hard not to utilize suspension days.
So, that 1314 was before you took over the program, is that right?
That is correct. And I cannot verify that data except that's what we had in Scottley. That's what we were able to pull.
Okay, yeah, I don't know about that data, I mean, but that's what we pulled. So, if you, these are days, these are the number of days for students in your program. So if you, these are days, these are the number of days for students in your program, that days they were suspended from school or days they were suspended from the bus, is that right?
Correct.
So that total includes the two added together?
Correct.
And your typical suspension would be for, what's the most typical?
It may be a fight between two students, a mutual, where we need to give them a day to cool off before we bring them back, and maybe that they get to the next Saturday. The bus suspensions are a little bit different, is that if it's a dangerous situation and they put the whole bus in danger or something through something that they've done, then we feel like we need to suspend them off the bus. But most of the suspensions, there's a progression of things that we do to suspend them prior to coming back to this board possibly with an expulsion or something like that. So. Okay, the next, the next slide talks about on-campus arrest. We're about right on par with what's been happening there the last three years. I don't think anything's changed with that. The first year was 2013, 2014 was 20. We were at 16. Halfway through this year, we're at 8. So I don't, there's no real big difference there. I just thought that there was something worth noting for you all. And the final slide just has some talking points, and I'll be brief. And questions as they, as they come to you, please interrupt me. In 2014, 2015, we had over 5,000 counseling hours. That was between the centers and a company called Ocala Prevention and Counseling that we contracted with for services over here, as well as in Marion County. This year, due to the center's reorganization, we have not had a center's counselor on our campus. We still have OPC, and now we have, we actually hired a person that's a certified addiction specialist who's doing some groups for us. So we hope to maintain that level of counseling at our facility for our students. We are working on 19 students who've had an extended stay at the Renaissance Center. Those 19 kids have been there. This is probably either their second or third administration, they've been there a long time. Now, this morning, as I was going over the list, we've been able to successfully get about four of those kids onto a different diploma option or back into their public school as of today. Kit and I are meeting with some other, some of the families of some of the other kids to see if we can get some diploma option situations going for those kids where they get motivated about at least graduating. So we do have a group of students at the Renaissance Center that have been there for so long that it's hard to imagine us or anybody else ever getting them motivated enough to get in and finish their education. And we're working real hard with those families and with the district to try to figure out some way of getting them onto the next step. An example of, we just had a student that we finally convinced that maybe a GED and a vocational certificate was the way to go. And he just got cleared to, to take the GED with La Cucia, and hopefully he'll pass, and then we'll move him into our scholarship program and help, help get him some type of vocational certificate where he can be out in the public and make a living. We've had a couple of human resource issues, and I wanted to bring those to your attention. Obviously, one of them's been bus drivers. The other one's been finding highly qualified teachers or professional teachers. I think half of our staff are highly qualified. That's important, because what I'm going to ask for here in a couple of minutes is something that I want the board to consider, and something that we want for the future, and I think it's going to help make us a better place and also help our partnership grow, where we can help more students succeed over the next few years. I've got to say that the partnership from Superintendent Himmel to Mr. Mullin to every board member that's been out and visited our campus, to the bus garage, to the human resources, to IT department, has been fantastic. We have felt nothing but support and nothing but helpfulness from everybody since the day we came here. And I couldn't be more happy with the partnership and the relationship that Citrus County has welcomed to us and hopefully has gone on to our staff and then on to our students, because it truly has been a partnership. And for that reason, we would like to, since our contract is up this year, go into a three-year contract deal with you for the next three years to maybe be able to provide some more security for some people that they want to come to work for us. We need to get a local SAC committee developed so that we can have meetings both in Marion and Citrus County. And a three-year agreement allows us to put some resources into community involvement and the community so that we can try to get an administrative team that lives in Citrus County and get more people vested in what we're trying to do. I think the first two years, we've taken to see if what our program could work with the students. And I believe it can.
How many students do you have now?
I think today we're 98 or 99.
Right at 100, okay.
Yeah.
And how many teachers do you have there?
I have six teachers.
That's okay. Thank you.
And so one of the things that I'd like to do is try to get into a multi-year agreement so we can kind of build on what we started the last year.
I'm glad you brought it up about having the parents of the county involved in having us from the county, because I know I show up and I'm federal town, you only reading in Ocala, and I'm going out to La Canto. So where are they? I keep missing this.
I apologize.
No, that's okay.
And I am, at my next.
I was getting on Patty when I was there.
There was nobody there.
At my next board meeting in Ocala, we're going to talk about having a committee meeting over in La Canto, especially if we decide on contract parameters so that we can start developing the people who all want to do it.
It would be very good, because some of the people who live there, the parents and stuff, can be there.
Absolutely.
And as you know, just makes it closer bonds.
Absolutely, sure does. I agree.
Is there, is there any reason the staff does not see why we shouldn't consider a three-year?
Or? No, I think what Mike says makes sense, you know, for his, for his human resource issues, to be able to go out and tell somebody we have a year-long contract as opposed to being able to commit to more, you know, a bigger commitment would probably help them. Our partnership, our relationship is excellent. We've been able to work out, I mean, like anything, issues come up every day, and we work them out, we resolve them. You know, right now, we're going through the process of working with our staff to identify issues that we want to bring up in the contract, and I'm sure Mike's doing the same with, on his side, and we'll sit down and hire those out with Mr. Bradshaw and Mike and put a contract together. You know, the question is, the past one was one year, with a one-year renewal. So I, you know, rely on Mr. Bradshaw's advice about whether we can go three years or if the board can do that.
For some reason, I thought with, our first year was a two-year, and then we went to one.
It was a one-year with a one-year.
Exactly, so, okay, so it was a one and one.
And that was as much at our request as it was, because.
They didn't, they wanted to be here after. Yeah.
We weren't, we weren't sure we were going to be successful, and so we wanted to make sure that we didn't.
But you got something good in Marion County, sometimes it's hard to.
Yes, exactly right. And we've had to do, we've had to do some things a little bit different over here, but we're getting some results now that we thought would mind, so.
One of the questions I have, and it's not really just for SERMI, so Mr. Mullin may be the one to respond to it, is just, because it was a challenge before, it was a challenge at Renaissance, not necessarily a SERMI challenge, or, is our ESE population? I'm sensitive to that, being a former ESE student myself, is, first and foremost, Renaissance has always been a, an alternative school. And when I say that, I know this board understands it from community watching, that means it's an alternative to an expulsion school. We also know, we have at that school roughly 90% of our students are Title I, economically disadvantaged students. And just from a statistic, often means we have a high percentage of ESE students. And ESE students can range from everything, from very minor needs to very high needs. Are we seeing ways that we can improve that? And again, it's not just a SERMI question, because again, you're inheriting students that we have in our high schools and our middle schools that come with challenges, but is there things we can, should we do to maybe improve that?
We've met with Mike, I probably, with him, Mike, his staff and our ESE staff, I think less than three times this year with that general topic. You know, and you know, when we say servicing ESE students, there's no one formula. Every ESE student is different. Every ESE student has different needs. So when we say can SERMI service ESE students, the answer is yes and no. Yes, they can. No, not all. You know, so some students don't belong there. Some students need to be at Crest, and some students are better served at their home school. So it's a little bit different. But it's been an ongoing process. We, and it keeps Nancy Haynes and Julie Kelsey are involved in that process, and, you know, they, they assess whatever needs or changes we may need to make, so SERMI can offer additional services. And Mike and his staff have been cooperative to this point, and we've been able to get those things resolved. But, you know, it's just not a carte blanche where any ESE student can go out there. It does, it does matter on what their IEP requires for them to, to be served out there. And if we can meet that, their IEP needs, then certainly that's an option for them to go out there. Sometimes we cannot because of staffing, and then in some of those cases, they may, depending on their classification, if they're EBD, we would send them to Crest, or we may need to service them at their home school in a different setting at their home school. So.
Is that where, in their, at their home school situation, is that something where it's kind of a, the old term, I think of as a self-contained, but I guess it's an alternative setting?
Self-contained, we also, we also use, you know, we have a program where we use with ESE, where we will use temporary staff, and if the school has a high-need student and we're not looking to send that student to SERMI or to Crest, but that student needs more supervision, we will put temporary staff on a one-on-one basis with that student until we get the behaviors under control. So it's all, there's not a magic formula for that, but it's, you know, we have a lot of different resources we try to employ, and it's whatever is in the best needs of that individual student.
Yes, I had a question in regards to your highly qualified teachers. I mean, that's the one area here that I'm a little bit concerned about, because I know you're saying you want a three-year contract, and that might help you get more highly qualified teachers, but then you said you had 50% highly qualified. Is there a difference between qualified and highly qualified? Or are you talking about teachers that have no certification? What's going on out there now?
No, what, all of our teachers qualify as teachers. They're all vetted by HR through Citrus County. They may just be missing a subject area exam or something like that, or a professional exam that they need to pass. So, and we have them on a professional development plan to try to get there. What happens is, is we hired some teachers initially, and when we have a one-year deal with a one-year renewal, if something came open in the district, well, they took the district job, so they leave us. So, so then we ended up scrounging around a little bit, and finding really quality people and then trying to get them so their certification matched up with the position that we needed them to. And we've cross-trained a lot of people. Our ESE person is also a certified, Soul Studies also certified in English, our Soul Studies teacher's also certified in English. Our science teacher, we just hired this year. We lost that lady to another school district. So we're working on getting her highly qualified. And so sometimes those things take time. And in the meantime, with us having a year-to-year deal.
Right.
They may not even fulfill that obligation if they find a job that, that matches their certification. Like, our teachers all have certifications in one area or the other, and we may be asking them to teach a different subject or something like that, that they are qualified to do. Heather's certified in mathematics, so she helps our math teacher get, you know, get what they need to be able to teach our students. But it's just something that concerns me as well. And one of the things that I'm going to my board with, to be honest with you, is what's worked at our, and we've started an ESE school in Marion County, so we're getting a little bit more well-versed at that. But one of the things that we did with that budget was that we hired teachers at 1,000 over the district pay scale because of the client. And I think that's something that we'd like to do in Citrus County as well, is hire 1,000 over the pay scale if they have all their requirements done, and we might be able to get people for the longer term that way. Because of the students that we work with, it's a little bit more of a grind and a job.
Right. Well, there's definitely some big challenges that you all face every day. I'd just like, as a board member, to be reassured that, you know, the learning, there's, you know, you're dealing with the students that you have out there, but there's still a focus on learning. And, you know, getting the kids back in the school, I know you're trying hard to do that, and a lot of it is based on their behavior. But I just, you know, I would like to see, you know, that focus on learning there. I'm not saying it's not there, but I'm just saying for me, because we do get, you know, people telling us that, I don't even want to send my, I want my kid to go there, you know, and we know that's all based on behavior and different things. But I like to see and have information about those things dealing with the learning side of it.
We do, we do do evaluations and inspections on SERMI. My staff, Head Service Technology, Regina, they're all involved in that. And so we can, we can answer those questions anytime the board wants that information. But we do meet with them on a regular basis. We make sure that they're scheduling the curriculum that we, instructional materials that we want used, and the curriculum that we want.
There's no red flags.
No. But as you mentioned, it is, you know, it is a lot tougher to teach math when you get, you know, severe behaviors, and they have some severe behaviors, so, but.
The curriculum and the mapping are all the same as the credit that are taught and the units that are taught in the public courses.
Regina, we do, don't we go over that with the board at the end of the year, the evaluation for SERMI?
Be that a little.
Yep, okay. Do we have?
And I would say, and obviously, we have two better board members, been there longer than me, but I think that Renaissance has always, we've had that complaint of, I don't want my kid going there. And, and I don't think it's been any more or less at this stage than it ever has been. It's, it's an alternative school, and that's going to be always that challenge. And I agree with you. Learning is always going to be paramount. I would keep hearing these powers in my head saying that, well, the reason they're acting out is because they do have underlying other issues that need to be addressed. And then I can tell you, as an ESE kid, if you can't read, you're going to find something to do in a classroom. If you can't do the math, you're going to find something to do.
One of their biggest challenges is, you know, there is such a difference in a classroom out there for what the skill level of the students are at. You're absolutely right. There's just a severe difference. So there's a lot of different strategies they employ, including competency-based computer programs that they employ with the students. So there's, it's a very different-looking classroom than what you'll see if you walk into IFS or Citrus High School. But the learning piece, I think I'm confident, say is still there.
Well, I could tell you that some of our data in initial assessment shows that the average Renaissance kid is working a little bit below a sixth-grade level, as for all ages. And by the time they leave us, we've raised their grade level a year and a half. That's our first year and a half debt. Also on top of that, though, is we do have some kids that have not been excelling prior to coming to us. We had 111.5 credits that kids earned through virtual school in the first year and a half of makeup work, that 200-whatever kids that we've had, that we've served, were able to not only take classes with us at Renaissance, but also get put on our virtual programs where they're able to make up some more credits. So the, the learning part is, is critical to us, but I got to tell you that before we get them right to, you know, we've got to get them right to be able to learn first as far as the attitude, the behavior, and the respect. And that's, that's, you know, we spend a lot of resources on that, and then once that kicks in, the other things kind of take over.
And I will tell you that between Regina and myself and staff, that they probably get visited more frequently than most schools do. We just stop in, we don't, I don't tell them when I'm coming, I just stop in and Heather will tell you. I show up as often as I can, unannounced. Regina does the same thing.
Regina does the same thing. We've never, there's never been a situation that we've been concerned with when we show up and asked to be taken to the classrooms.
Yeah, and that, and that goes for, I think, I hope, when you guys have come out as well, we want to be transparent as possible about this thing. If we're not succeeding in anything, you know, we're going to be talking about maybe, you know, doing something else or giving you guys some advice on what else to do, but we feel comfortable that what we're doing is in the best interest of kids out there.
Mr. Kennedy's right, there's always been parents that don't want their kids to go to Renaissance. Well, they're lucky to have a Renaissance school, in my humble opinion, and we give that to them as an option, and if they don't want it, they can choose something else. But, you know, three strikes and you're out. We've got schools that need to operate and if your kid can't perform.
Behaviorally.
Behaviorally, I'm talking. They need to shape up.
And that's gotten a lot better this year than it was the first year. Nobody likes change a lot much when it happens.
Right.
It's been a lot better.
Right.
But again, the numbers of 64 in the first year and already 45 kids leaving this year and people are getting on board and getting with us and realizing some changes need to be made.
I appreciate the hard work you do.
It's definitely, Mike's right, the trend is coming back around in a positive sense from Renaissance. You know, he, he'll tell you, when they first took over and, you know, our phone was burning up, his phone was burning up, but now that things are moving forward and it's become more of, I don't, I guess they've just kind of accepted that this is the way things are going to be and they're getting in line and the kids we're getting back are, we're seeing better results with them and not being sent right back. They don't want to go right back. And, you know, a lot of that's attributed to their programs and their, the way that they do things. And one of the things Mike recently did was an after-school detention, which is real popular with the parents, not so much with the kids. But, you know, his goal is not to send them home and then, so they, they figured out a way to keep kids there and bus them home a few hours after everybody else has been home. So I don't like that at all.
I saw the SERMI buses, they're really lame.
Yeah, you might have. That wasn't a flat tire, that was our, a group of kids had been cleaning at the Renaissance Center and some group counseling and some other things. We, we weren't getting the parent participation we needed for after-school, so we just figured out a way to drive them home ourselves, so. And willing to be held, a lot of the after-school work details have gone down since then, so.
Any more questions? Just that I'm receptive to, you know, to considering a three-year agreement. I am, I would certainly not discourage and use the word maybe encourage you to explore a type of wage increase as you were describing. I want to say, while I know this board understands this, so that maybe it's on the record of some public, there could be some that say, well, why didn't you do that when you all had Renaissance? Well, first thing is, we have to bargain through collective bargaining. And it's not that I think this board hasn't been receptive, and I'm thinking of some board members here that have said that that was never something we didn't want to consider, but we have a different process than you all. We have to go through collective bargaining and that has to be something that is, that's actually decided at that level, so it's a different process. You all, and this is what I think has been positive about hiring adults at school, they can respond to that in a way that is different from us. And you can also make other modifications than perhaps to be able to afford that in your budget. It's a different type of operation and they have different challenges and different needs that they can offer. So I just would say, I wish you the best with that and if we can look to that, I hope we can, we can work something together.
And they have a good relationship, I just want to throw out there, with Microschool, who was leasing the other half of that school. That's been working out fine. So we're actually, we have, we're utilizing more of that facility than we have in years between what Microschool's leasing it from us for and then SERMI leasing the other side.
Twice as many students, I think, are going there a day between the two.
But no doubt. And also, Mr. Kennedy, on your term, what, as a 501(c)(3), if we need to do something for a student, we can go out and get a donor and that gives us a huge flexibility for our board and our program.
Guys, thanks very much. Very, very pleased, very happy you came to share this with us.
Yeah, we owe you an apology, I'm so sorry about that. We'll make it up.
That's all, just let you know when you meet, I think Regina's going to, I'll be there.
All right.
Thanks so much. Okay, I think we'll take a recess and do you all want to take a half hour lunch or an hour lunch?
Take whatever you guys want.
What do you feel like? Okay, we'll do a half hour, okay. So we'll be back at about 1:00. Excuse me, 2:00.
We're here for lunch.
Michael, are you drinking coffee back here? It's been 15 minutes.
Michael, nice to see you.
See you, buddy.
Nice presentation.
Thanks. I like talking to this group.
Yeah, it's a good group.
Always.
Let me know.
Oh, I, oh, I, yeah. Oh, okay. Oh, Miss White.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, thank you.
I have stuff to do.
Just glad I said that. Tyler.
I know.
Yes, yeah. I'm glad he should have looked.
Thank you, it's for mommy.
I know. When she did that, it was really, really good. So, yes, sorry. I hope it filled your quest.
It was good.
We spent a lot of time and I knew it was wrong, but.
It's important.
It's showcase is.
Oh, I was.
It showcases it.
The Chronicle, by the way, is having to watch it online, I think.
Yeah.
He must have.
I didn't have to watch it on.
He calls me in the middle of the meeting.
He could just be here at 4:00 and we'll do it again.
He goes, I thought you guys were going, doing it at 4:00.
Would you all vote on a half hour now? Would you vote on a half for an hour?
Half, we'll be right back.
Close to two as possible.
We can't vote. There's a workshop.
I think two.
All right, well, Evan's lunch.
Don't leave. Don't leave her.
Yes, ma'am.
I tell you, I get, you know, from being a council for so long, I hear this and I, I guess we are in the field. Except. Hey.